Call this meeting to order. Director, you call the roll, please.
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Augustin Oak.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Dablos.
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg.
Here.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
And Alderman Wilkie.
Here.
You join me as you are able in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just curious, is anyone here from Arts Dupage? We'd invited some folks, we thought they were going to be here, but they couldn't make it. But I have a proclamation to read for the Arts Dupage Month. So if you're not familiar with it, Arts Dupage is an initiative of the Dupage Foundation. If you're not familiar with the Dupage Foundation, I'd encourage you to go visit it online sometime, dupagefoundation.org, and see all the good they do across the million people that call Dupage County their home. So let me read this proclamation to you, you might get a little education out of this at least. But go to the dupagefoundation.org sometime, learn a little bit about what they're up to. So, this is a proclamation recognizing Arts Dupage. Whereas Arts Dupage has regularly issued official proclamations to all the cities and villages in Dupage County on an annual basis, designating October as Arts Dupage Month. And whereas the arts embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind. And whereas the arts enrich us as individuals and play a unique role in the lives of our families and our communities. And whereas the arts promote a better understanding of the diversified cultures within our communities and unify us regardless of age, race, and ethnicity. And whereas the arts sector in Dupage County consists of 2,272 arts-related businesses and accounts for 4.2% of the total number of businesses in Dupage County, a larger share of the economy than transportation, tourism, agriculture, and construction. And whereas the arts provide full-time employment for over 15,000 workers in Dupage County. And whereas the arts improve our economy, enrich our civic life, drive tourism and commerce, and exert a profound positive influence on the education of our children. And whereas the arts help lead us through the darkest times by lifting our spirits, unifying communities, and providing entertainment, they also play a vital role in enlivening our public spaces, driving the economy, and elevating the appeal of our county. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Andrew Johnson, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, hereby proclaim October 2025 as Arts Dupage Month in the City of Warrenville and call upon our community members, friends, and neighbors to celebrate and promote the arts in Dupage County. So, anybody involved in the arts, congratulations, this is your month. So, congratulations to Arts Dupage for what they do. We will give this to them. And I have some more comments here, okay? So, this meeting is to be conducted in the traditional in-person format at City Hall. For convenience, the public may be viewing this virtually or on the city's YouTube channel. Public comment is available in person only during the meeting, and the remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. So to everyone in attendance, if you intend to speak, I assume you've filled out one of these forms and gotten it to the clerk. Fill out one of these forms, get it to the clerk, and we will make sure you're connected and connected with anybody on particular follow-ups you may ask for as well. So, before I begin though, just thank you everyone for being here. I know many of you in the room, I can, I know your faces, and we've chatted about various different things over the years and certainly leading up to this meeting. So I want to thank you all for being here to come, share the time out of your busy schedules, to share your thoughts with us. So please note though, to ensure that everyone here has the opportunity to speak, public comment is limited to three minutes per person, so please adhere to that time limit. Director Dollstrand will keep track of that and wave you down when you get close to that. But I think you'll be able to get your comments in three minutes, please. So please be respectful of your neighbors by adhering to the time limit as noted. We do not directly respond to comments, although your comments may be responded to in the conversation later. But this time is dedicated to the public for the purpose of sharing feedback with the city council. So that being said, please be assured that a lack of response to a particular comment does not signal a lack of interest, or that we didn't hear you, or we weren't listening. We are listening to your comments and concerns, it's what we do. Please remember to be respectful and courteous to everyone else in the room regardless of their viewpoint. So please, no clapping, no shouting, no hollering, or otherwise interrupting speakers or the proceedings of the council. And not just for those in the room, but remember there are people watching at home. And if you've ever watched a YouTube video from home, that really messes with things if they're unacceptable noises behind the scenes. So please, keep comments civil, one another, we're all neighbors. So let's proceed with the public comments this evening though. Rob Esch, first on top. Rob, you want to come on up?
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Robert Esch, and I'm here representing a growing number of Warrenville residents who are deeply concerned about the proposed Cantara Town Point development. Let me begin with the heart of our concern, aesthetic fit. Warrenville is a community defined by its character, tree-lined streets, modestly scaled homes, and a cohesive architectural identity that reflects decades of thoughtful planning. The proposed Cantara Point development, with its high-density layout and modern townhome design, stands in stark contrast to the surrounding neighborhoods. It's not just about style, it's about scale, rhythm, and harmony. The development threatens to disrupt the visual continuity and charm that makes Warrenville. One of the most troubling aspects of this proposal is a lacking meaningful buffer between the new townhomes and the adjacent single-family homes. There's no transition zone, no green space, no setback, no architectural bridge to soften the impact. Instead, the development places dense, multi-unit structures directly alongside traditional homes, creating a jarring visual and spatial divide. This abrupt shift undermines the integrity of the existing neighborhood and disregards the principles of thoughtful urban planning and design. And let's not forget what this development sits, at the gateway to our city. For visitors, commuters, and potential future residents, Cantara Point will be their first impression of Warrenville. Instead of being welcomed by the warmth and charm that defines our community, they'll be greeted by a wall of three-story townhomes densely packed and architecturally disconnected from the neighborhood they border. This is not a design issue, it's a branding issue. It reshapes how Warrenville is seen and felt from the moment someone arrives. Some have questioned the validity of online petitions opposing this development. Let me be clear, the data's been carefully validated against current voter rolls. Of the 569 total signatures, 348 are confirmed Warrenville residents, 291 are registered voters. These are not anonymous clicks, they're real constituents, verified and engaged. Dismissing their voices is not only inaccurate, it's disrespectful. And these voters will not forget, the decision will not be remembered in passing conversation, it will be remembered at the next election. For our newly-elected mayor, this is not just a vote on a development, it's the beginning of a legacy. Will that legacy reflect the responsiveness to residents, respect for the neighborhood character, and commitment to inclusive planning?
Thirty seconds.
Or will it be remembered as the moment Warrenville turned its back on its own identity? We understand the pressures of growth, we understand the need for housing, but growth must be guided by vision, not just volume. We ask that you reconsider this development, not out of opposition to progress, but out of commitment to thoughtful, community-centered planning. Let's work together to find solutions that honor Warrenville's identity. Let's ensure that any new development enhances our city's character rather than erodes it.
Time.
Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you, Rob. Steve Alice is next, and just after Steve, Kevin Sinnet is up next, if you just want to get in line or be prepared.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and city staff. I'm Steve Alice, I live at 27W 554 Warrenville Road. I'm here tonight to make something crystal clear. The Cantara Point development is a bad idea for Warrenville, and it's time for all of us to step up and stop it. Some people have asked, what do you want instead? It's simple, leave the property zone for commercial use and stop pushing for massive residential projects that don't fit our community. Let me say this loud and clear, we are not here to be pushed around by a developer. Who wants to maximize their profit at our expense? This isn't about one big business buying up land, it's about choosing what's right for Warrenville. And what's right is not cramming a high-density townhome project onto land that can't handle it. The current proposal asks us to accept 91 units, which is 60% over the city's own density code. That's not just a technical violation, it's disrespectful to our city, our roads, and our quality of life. Now here's the alternative, a project that actually makes sense. We're not saying no development at all, we're saying stick to the code. Reduce the units to 56, no more. At what level, at that level, the project becomes manageable, it solves the traffic concerns, gives residents proper space, driveways that are more than one car length, street parking, green spaces for kids to play, and room to breathe. And by sticking to the 56-unit cap, we're going to also avoid overcrowding our schools and public services, crippling our roads with more traffic, saddling taxpayers with long-term costs that the developer will never have to pay. What we're asking for is community-first development, something that respects Warrenville's values, our small-town charm, our family-friendly spaces, and our commitment to smart growth, not reckless expansion. We don't need another cookie cutter townhome project, we need balance, and the 56-unit proposal is the only way to get there. We understand the property owner has a right to sell or develop the land, but it's also our right as residents to make sure any development benefits us, not just a developer looking for a quick payout. And make no mistake, this community is paying attention. Today we went, we sent 568 online petition signatures to the Warrenville City Council.
Thirty seconds.
Urging you to stop Cantara Point in addition to the 122 petition signatures, paper petition signatures that we filed on Friday, where we went door-to-door. So tonight, I'm asking you to do exactly that. Stop the Cantara Point development as proposed, tell the developer, stick to the code, reduce the units, and give us something that works for Warrenville, not against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin Sinnet, you're next, and after Kevin is Chris Gay. Or you're also welcome to not speak and say, just.
May I make a request? May I hold out through the paver's because I may make a comment.
I will. I don't have a paver here signed up. Okay. Kevin, you're up, come on up. And again, Chris Gay, if you want to be prepared after Kevin.
I buy the cheap ones at Walgreens. Okay, good evening. We've been told Warrenville must accept this dense development, nearly twice the size of the original one that was proposed, and that it's necessary because the city is facing financial difficulties. But if that's true, then we deserve honesty, not pressure. And if that's not true, then this council is making decisions on fiction, not finances. The east side of Warrenville isn't just a neighborhood, it's a symbol of what's still right in America. Modest, individually styled, single-family homes built by families who believed in ownership, community, and trust. These values are worth defending. This project isn't about community, the project is about money and profit. The builder wants more units to cover construction costs. The traffic study was done during COVID when roads were empty. Everyone here knows what traffic looks like today and what it will look like when Naperville's new development a half-mile south pours even more cars onto Warrenville Road. We're not naive, and we live it every day. But what troubles us, what troubles me most, isn't the traffic or the density, it's the quiet surrender of moral responsibility. The land use covenant that was written and should really serve this project's moral compass is either missing or is, for some unknown reason, gone, seemingly forgotten. Our leaders say their job is to make any offer work, and I suggest this means they forget who they truly work for. None of you were elected to serve the developers, you were elected to serve the people, to uphold the land's original sale conditions, and it was established that the land would remain commercial to protect the promise made to the original owners who trusted this city. We have decades ahead to find the correct project. The investor, property owner, knew this when they bought it, it's not our job to rescue them. Nearly, it sounds like there's even more, nearly 300 residents have signed petitions asking for one thing, integrity. Please keep your word, honor the original agreement, remember that character is doing what's right, even when it's inconvenient, even when powerful people are pushing you to look the other way. We, the citizens, will remember how you honored those, the city.
Thirty seconds.
If this council votes yes tonight, it sends a message that contracts and promises mean nothing in Warrenville. But if you vote no, or send us back for review, a search for the covenant to follow its edict and perform a proper traffic study, you send a far stronger message that this city keeps its word, values its citizens, cannot be bought. This is not just a zoning decision, it's a test of integrity, yours and ours. Please let Warrenville's legacy be one of ours.
Time.
Not compromise.
Thank you. Chris Gay? And then Mary Ramston is next?
Hello, Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity. My name's Chris Gay, I live on Wilbur Avenue. If you hadn't been over there lately, you'll notice there's almost 100 "Stop Cantara Point" signs in the neighborhood. I don't know who, actually I learned up tonight, who bought them, but you really ought to take a drive up there, 100 of them. Somebody did that out of their own pocket. A lot of what I wanted to say was said, but I'd like to kind of review the city zoning and planning meeting of about a week ago. Or what, two weeks when it was? Yeah, anyway, the previous structure had been the developer had come up and presented their proposal, and then we, Warrenville residents, were allowed to make comments. Funny, the last meeting, they didn't come up, their lawyer did. Hmm, interesting. Then, we made our comments, then their lawyer came up and made comments again. The entire structure of the meeting was changed. Really interesting. And then the last one, this has really got me. A guy that didn't fill out the red sheet, he was a realtor from West Chicago, not even in our city. He was called up to make a little statement. Well, I thought you had to be a Warrenville resident. And he's a real estate guy, conflict of interest, guys, okay? Why was he allowed to speak? Why were they allowed to speak twice, and the residents were allowed to speak once? And on a personal note, the guy who was running that meeting is a contractor. Does this kind of, a little conflict of interest thing go in there too? Okay, this last meeting was completely restructured to try to ram this down our throat. It was invalid because it violated the meeting's own rules. Okay, we had that, we had a. Why was a West Chicago guy allowed to come up and speak who had nothing to do with it, didn't fill out the paper? Why was that done? And he was the only guy that agreed with this company that wants to build the townhomes. This doesn't pass the smell test in any way, shape, or form. Okay? Stinks from top to bottom. You guys need to listen.
Thirty seconds.
The rules, okay, when they bought the property, they knew the rules, they knew the density numbers, okay? Make them stick with it. Thank you.
Mary Ramston? And then Bob Seibert? I'm sorry? Oh, gotta be here to speak, so, Bob Seibert? And then after Bob, Kevin Jameson?
Bob Seibert Albright. This is the 1994 Cantara Site Plan. The City of Warrenville received this and a master plan for $55 million. We spent $55 million because we wanted a plan, a master plan. We wanted zoning that was proper, not spot zoning that you have or trying to get tonight. John Davis, the longtime chairman of the Plan Commission, stated at a public hearing that commercial zoning was the one zoning classification that gave more to the city than it took. Gives more to the city beneficial than what it takes. Now you're going to remove commercial zoning from a $55 million plan that we took years to develop. In 1993, I sat at the table with the developers and asked the question, what is the expected date of Cantara completion? Their answer, 50 years, 50 years. You can't develop 660 acres in 10 years, 20 years. You can't do it. They were lucky, they had tremendous building at the beginning. It's been 32 years. So we paid $55 million, 32 years, and we're ready to throw it into the toilet. This action will decrease the future.
Thirty seconds.
Potential revenue to the city and increase the developmental costs for the city, the exact opposite of the 1993 proposal. We should support the 1993 proposal.
Thank you, next is Kevin Jameson. And after Kevin will be Brett Wells.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kevin Jameson, I live at 3S 536 Wilbur Avenue. My wife and I, Judy, we moved into our house four years ago. We chose Warrenville because it is quaint, it's small, it's just a lovely place to live, right? I want to highlight what this proposal takes away, for Cantara Point, takes away from our community. I got a couple points that I just want to hit with you. Livability and safety. The plan offers minimal green space and undersized play areas, I think they refer to it as a tot lot, which doesn't sound very appealing. For young children, and no meaningful buffer from the hotel traffic and the surrounding roads. I think we've all driven down Warrenville Road 1,000 times, we know that it's not the slowest road, the traffic is quick. And having a little tot lot near that probably isn't that safe. It's not a neighborhood, it's a set of units squeezed into a commercial edge. Feels like we're trying to fit a square peg in a round hole here. The other two points I want to hit on is fit and character. The high design, high-density, three-story rows without real open space doesn't really reflect what Warrenville, the small town that my wife and I chose to live in because of how cute and how small it is. It doesn't reflect that small-town feel. We should be building neighborhoods, not what the builders are referring to as product. Our successful local models like Cantara Village, Emerald Green, and Herrick Hills, they are pair of homes with breathing room, safety, and walkable shared space that this plan does not offer. My request is simple, and it's constructive. Either send this plan back to the Plan Commission to redesign at a maximum of 56 units with real open space standards and children's safety buffers, or, and I think this is more preferred, decline the rezoning and retain the commercial so that this corner delivers the daytime activity and services that Cantara, that Bob was just talking about, that Cantara was designed for. Please choose the path that protects Warrenville's charm and delivers a project that truly fits. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett Wells? And after Brett Wells, Melissa Hogan?
My name is Brett Wells, and me and my wife live at the corner of Lorraine and Warrenville Road. I'd like to thank the council for having us here. I have to agree with everybody else about the 91 units exceeding it. Variances are an exception, they should not be the rule. So it would be best if we sent that back and have them drop it down even closer to the 56 units proposed. They're not minor details, they're foundational to the integrity of our zoning process. These rules and guidelines help us keep a community feeling small and feel comfortable. The more we make variances and allow them, the bigger it gets, the bigger the projects get, the less people like it. I walked all of Ward 3 and all of Ward 4, twice, knocking door-to-door. And everybody's concern was the same thing, this is not going to be the small town I moved into. This is not what people want. We are asking that this gets sent back and be, as everybody else said, either rezoned or, excuse me, not rezoned or downsized. I have to ask that, you listen to the people. I've heard you guys say, not this many people ever show up to these meetings. You put a sign up, a few of us saw it, and we decided to talk to somebody. Nobody likes this project, more so because of the size and the density. Make it fit Warrenville, and then we'll accept it. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Hogan? And after Melissa, Jose Chapayama? Does that sound right?
Hi, I'm Melissa Hogan, I live on the south end of Wilbur Avenue, near the proposed construction. Thank you for listening to my comments. I'm here to speak about infrastructure and safety concerns at the Cantara Point Development. First, the builder reduced the separation between buildings from 62 feet to just 55 feet, including both driveways and the main road. That is not adequate spacing for a residential neighborhood, it's a squeeze and it's maximizing profits over livability. Parking is another issue, and it's been talked about at previous meetings. It includes no street parking, only 35 extra guest spaces for over 250 residents, guests, and service vehicles. Driveways are only one car length, and there is not enough room for cars and garbage cans on garbage pickup day. This will lead to overflow, congestion, frustration for residents, and neighbors alike. The site is bordered by two hotels and two busy four-lane roads, no crosswalks. Residents will be surrounded by traffic and concrete, and children will have no safe access to play areas or green space outside of the small planned tot lot. High-density housing brings hidden costs that the city and taxpayers will bear, including long-term strain on schools, emergency services, and public utilities. This is not smart growth, it's rushed, risky, and out of step with Warrenville's own infrastructure and safety standards. We are not against growth, we are not against multifamily housing. We are opposed to this very high-density plan that is out of step with Warrenville's characteristics and its standards. We respectfully ask that this proposal go back to the Plan Commission for further review and either be kept at 56 units or ideally remain zoned commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Chapayama? And then Katie Ellebo?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My message is about health, maybe because I am getting old, I don't know. My message is about health, maybe because I am getting old, I don't know, but this matter brings on the top about health. When I say that is because, as you all know, we got the road 88 and Warrenville Road running 100 cars west-eastbound on both roads. And according to my calcs I made, the, right now, Warrenville, the quality of air, the QI air, right now is 46. And according to the records, it's not that bad for us. But since developers, I don't have nothing against the developers, but if they build that complex, there are two numbers, 91 units, according to what Steve is proposing, if the case goes on, 46. This, just like a brief calcs, you know, it will be like more than 100 more cars in the complex. So right now, the 46 QI air is the average for this month. But on top of that, we add those 100 cars, it will be plus 38 QI air. So if we add those numbers, it will be something like 83 QI air. And the record says that at that amount, it's not bad, but for people who have some, like asthma or some lung problems, will be affected for the amount. So that's where I am, you know, I found out. And these are real numbers. And so my pledge now is for our aldermen and for our mayor
30 seconds.
...to take a list, you know, for our health, not just my kids, every man's health from Warrenville. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Elbow. And then Mario Schwartz.
As a Warrenville resident, moved here in 2009, I fell in love with the small community and the charm and the values that were established here. My request is that you uphold Warrenville's housing density limits as written in our city code. The zoning and city codes are promises to current residents. This is what is allowed as a maximum. Rezoning is one thing, maximum density is another. There's reasons why the code exists and we have to stand by it. Your duty tonight, as reminded on the website of Warrenville, is that the city council is to be representation of the people of their wards, not the city staff, not the developers. You are representing the people, and if the signs on the streets and the social media coverage and the people here tonight don't speak volumes to you, then there's a problem. That is your role tonight. You have a responsibility tonight to the residents, not the bank. So Warrenville's small-town character is one of our greatest assets. We, as you can see, people move here because of that. We are not overbuilt like our neighbors. High-density could erode that and will erode that. It's not anti-growth. There's possibilities, but this plan is not okay. We all live by rules of the code, homeowners to small business owners, but the developers should have to as well. Hold them accountable to stay within our code. I urge you to please stand by our code. Don't approve the developments that exceed our density limits. It protects our integrity of our planning and the livability of our neighborhoods. We do have the small-town character. That doesn't mean we do not welcome residential housing, but not high-density housing. A few things that I just passed here on my way driving here. As I'm on Warrenville Road, there's, of course, one side, as somebody mentioned, covered in Stop Cantera Point signs. On the other side is what looks to be a street sign, run over.
30 seconds.
There's a reason. Do not approve this proposal. Send it back. Stand by the residents. You have a responsibility tonight to speak on their behalf and vote on their behalf, and it will be remembered. This makes, as mentioned, a legacy. Make your choices wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Schwartz and then Vicki Mail.
I'm going to be a little more calm the last time. I was very passionate about this. Why? Because I live in 27W 530 Warrenville Road, corner of Wilbur Avenue. So I've seen all that area transformed and see the two hotels that were created there. By the way, Claire, I lived in Cantera Village. That was where I lived first. So I know townhome living very well. Would you be surprised that if we use Cantera and the village, just the spaces that they have, only 11 buildings would fit on this place, not 18? If we use Emerald Green as an example, 10 and 1/2 buildings would only fit in there just to keep the size of the street, the green space, and what we need to do. I'm very excited for this plan, and it has no retention pond. Have you seen a retention pond in there? Have you lived in that area? No, I have. I see how the water accumulates. I see how the water goes in there and how my water pump goes crazy when there's a lot of rain in there. How are they going to get rid of that? Are they going to overflow the hotel lines and what exists there? Because that's what the plan shows. I don't know that the Planning Commission saw that. I did a little research about everything that everybody's been talking here, and we share the plans, the covenants, all the different pieces that exist in there. It was very clear. On Zero to 10, four single-family homes. The rest, commercial, they have limitation about medical that you had in there. And when you put all that together, there's also a covenant limit on the square feet that you can have in there. Nobody's talking about that. If you put all these many housing in there, you're already exceeding what that whole covenant is, and you haven't contacted any of the family, not that we know, to do that because we know people here that are family of those all owners, and nobody has been connected. So I would say very simple, you know, I understand, Mayor, that we have to adjust, you know? And there's some variances. By the way, I was a real estate broker, so I know the laws very well about real estate. There's some things that we can tweak, especially to benefit the community. But if we're short on taxes, that we can basically justify that we're going to add $60 more per person that pays taxes here
30 seconds.
...that doesn't justify that. So I'm going to talk to each of you and put you in a real place, like I said, hey, you are the official, you're the priest that is saying, we talked last time about a marriage, right? And this is a marriage that you're trying to do. Remember the priest says, if somebody wants to speak, speak now or hold your peace. Look how many people have spoken. This is a bad marriage. Please, consider us and protect us, your citizens. I've been here
Time.
...27 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Mail. And then Kathy Kimber.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I've lived in Warrenville for a few decades. I'm speaking on behalf of the teachers in the community. I am a retired school teacher, and there is nothing worse than a school being overpacked with kids because education has a tendency to be reactive and not proactive. And I would like you just to step back and look at the impact that's going to have on these kids getting their education today. That was my number-one concern as soon as I read this. I said, where are they going to put all those kids? The school system, it's the last place these kids can go that they feel safe, and it's not always safe. But the more kids you put in there, the more problems you're going to have with behavior. And I'm afraid that the crime rate could go up. You have hotel people coming in and out, and now you're going to cram all these people in a small space. When people are bored, that's when they get in trouble. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Kathy Kimber. And then Hank Sikora.
Hi, I'm Kathy Kimber. Thank you for listening. Good evening. The group I had years ago, I started in 1991, and it was a lot of fun. It was 34 years ago. And the Tribune thought it was a good idea, so they came out and took pictures of all the kids and me, and we were working out there, picking up litter, and everybody thought that was a great idea. And the group is called the Adopted Block Club. And what we do is just walk around your neighborhood with your family, be safe with gloves, you know, bucket or bag, and several times during the month. And then at the first Saturday of every month, we can go to Trinity Church and have a free pancake and sausage breakfast. And they're encouraging us to do that. So I thought that was a great idea. And then when we do walk around the neighborhoods doing that during that month, we wear red, white, and blue. In the past, we have been in the Fourth of July parade, and that looks really nice to wear those colors of the flag. So I just want to say, Warrenville and Bloom has backed us in the past and gave us actually a bookmark, and we would put all the dates to go to the church on the bookmark so that we could have our meeting there. So I appreciate your time. Thank you so much. And one more thing, Hank Sikora is going to talk, and Hank is going to do all of the emailing. I don't email, so Hank is going to do that. And so we'll gather emails at the meetings, at the church, and then people can take pictures of what they've done throughout the month, and it sounds like a lot of fun. Thank you so much. And thank you, Warrenville and Bloom, for helping us.
We're supporting us with the program.
Thank you. Hank Sikora. By the way, that breakfast at Trinity is open to anybody in the community, not just the Adopted Block Club. So anybody is welcome to that first Saturday of every month. Hank?
Hi, I'm Hank Sikora. I'm the creator of the HOZO Project. The HOZO Project is an Avila term, which means harmony with nature. And what we did when we created it, we not only included nature, but business, community, city services, police department, so that we could interact with everyone in order to be able to get sustainability. And by sustainability, I mean a clean city of Warrenville. I'd like to congratulate Kathy Kimber on 34 years of volunteer service with the Adopted Block Club. We presently have six members working on their own in Naperville, Warrenville, Lombard. We're a little unorthodox with the way we do things, not like where they assemble groups together, but we do the perimeter, which is the outside area where Batavia Road Route 59 and Butterfield are. That's the more riskier areas, and then the families with their kids can work inside the areas. We're thrilled to merge with the HOZO Project with the Adopted Block Club. And I said, we work those areas. We have contacted Public Works Police, DuPage Forest Preserve, Warrenville Park Districts, and merchants to resolve issues. So far, we have donated from the cans that we find and the money we find, $220 from aluminum and money to the food pantry at the Emmanuel Presbyterian Church, community working together. Our cleanup efforts have saved the city of Warrenville resources and money. They can use their resources for other things besides picking up garbage. And our efforts have reduced the chances of getting West Nile virus because we pick up cups that accumulate water and allow the Culex mosquitoes to develop. So far in DuPage, there have been 11 cases, but none in Warrenville. So there's one other thing. If you don't think it's important, the Sunday that I went walking in the back alley
30 seconds.
...of glory, near a dumpster, and I picked it up and I saved it. So it is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Hank. So that concludes public comment. We now have, moving on to officials and staff comments. Okay, good point. Did anybody want to speak that didn't get a chance or didn't hear their voice in the voices that spoke? Okay, good point. Thank you very much for that. Mayor's report, nothing to report at this time. Clerk? Treasurer?
I'd just like to address one thing that one of the people said. I was first on the city council back in 1985, and that I'm not aware that we ever had a rule that we would only hear from Warrenville citizens. Two weeks ago, I was given an opportunity to speak at the Winfield Village Board, and I really appreciated all the people here tonight, and they made a lot of interesting comments. And if somebody from West Chicago was coming here and had an interesting comment, I'd want to hear that too. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman. Alderman Wiener?
Yes, you mentioned celebrating the arts this month. There are a number of other October celebrations that we can pay attention to and celebrate. And the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission honors federally-recognized heritage and history months as part of its work to build an inclusive Warrenville community. And on October 13th, National Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrates the contributions, resilience, and sovereignty of indigenous peoples. And then also, October recognizes German-American Heritage Month, Filipino-American Heritage Month, Italian-American Heritage Month, Polish-American Heritage Month. So there's lots of things to celebrate in the Warrenville community, and I'm proud to say that Warrenville welcomes everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Other aldermen? John, you're leaning in. No? Okay. Wrapped attention, I guess. Okay. Administrator?
Nothing.
Attorney?
Nothing.
Nothing to add? Okay. So the next step in our agenda is the approval of the agenda. We will get to the items that were discussed in public comment, so just bear with us. Do any aldermen wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for placement under the regular agenda section of this meeting? Okay. So hearing none. Would anyone care? Alderman Wiener?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the October 6, 2025 city council regular meeting.
All right. Second? Motion second by Alderman Crokenberg. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. We have a number of minutes to approve. Alderman Wiener?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the September 15, 2025 city council meeting, regular meeting, and to approve the minutes of the September 15, 2025 closed session meeting, and to approve the minutes of the September 22, 2025 Public Safety and Finance Committee meeting.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? And that motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Next are a number of items for the consent agenda, so bear with me while we read through these, and then I'll ask for a motion on the consent agenda. So, item A, accept the Plan Commission recommendation. So, Item A, accept the Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance O2025-46, approving a revised preliminary planned unit development plan for Phase 3, and a preliminary plat of subdivision and conditionally approving certain site-specific amendment, and major planned unit development amendments for the River West 55-plus apartments in the Riverview West Mixed Use Development, Cantera SubArea C-2. Item B, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve the calendar year 2026 city holiday schedule as posted, as presented. Item C, accept the Public Safety and Finance Committee recommendation and approve the fiscal year 2027 budget preparation and adoption timeline as presented, including a City Council Budget Workshop on Saturday, March 14th, 2026. Item D, receive and file minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Meeting, held on August 12, 2025. Item E, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Meeting, held on August 14, 2025. Item F, receive and file minutes of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission Meeting, held on August 19, 2025. Item G, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meetings, held on September 4, 2025. Item H, receive and file report of invoices paid up to October 1st, 2025 in the amount of $268,689.25. Item I, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before October 20, 2025 in the amount of $866,106.72. Item J, receive and file report of the Chase Commercial Card expenditures for the month of September 2025 in the amount of $12,581.47. And Item K, receive and file wire transfers report for September 2025. And that concludes the consent agenda items. Motion? Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented by Mayor Andrew Johnson.
Second?
Second by Alderman Davalos. Any conversation, discussion, questions? Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
And Alderman Crokenberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much for that. The regular agenda has three agenda items, the first of which is the recommendation from staff to accept the Plan Commission recommendation and direct the city attorney to prepare draft ordinances granting the zoning approvals to authorize the Cantera Point Town Home Development on Maycliff Drive. So before we get into that, I think we're going to have a presentation by Assistant Economic Development Director, or...
Can we do the motion first, Brooke?
I thought there was going to be a presentation, not a motion.
You can do the motion first.
It's up to us. Well, let's do the presentation first. So then turn it over to Amy Emery, our Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to provide some very brief remarks this evening related to the process getting us to the agenda item for consideration this evening. And then after my remarks, the representatives from D.R. Horton are here this evening to talk through the details of the project. The process for reviewing Cantera Point began and went through efforts the same as any other project of this scope and nature in Warrenville. It's been transparent, and it's offered many opportunities for input. We greatly value the process in that it provides opportunities for experts and for your city staff, for the community, and for the Plan Commission to thoroughly consider a project. And typically, what we see often through that process is that it improves from the initial concept idea through the feedbacks that's received. The process for Cantera Point has spanned over a year, well over a year at this point. And it started, as these types of projects do, with a pre-application meeting with our city staff. That meeting occurs when somebody has a concept or an idea. The staff that attend that meeting include representatives from the building, engineering, and planning teams, as well as our friends and partners at the Warrenville Fire Protection District. And we come together to share in response to the concept or the idea what the zoning standards are, the code requirements, required applications, and to explain the public process that's required and the notifications involved. After that initial pre-application meeting with staff, D.R. Horton then participated in a voluntary Courtesy Review Meeting before the Plan Commission. That was in December of 2024. This provided D.R. Horton, their team, to get more feedback on the Cantera Point project before determining whether or not to apply. There were several questions asked by the Plan Commission and a lot of feedback provided on the very preliminary layout and features at that point in time. And the Plan Commission recommended at the end of that meeting that D.R. Horton bring forth a formal application with consideration for the feedback that they received. After getting that feedback, D.R. Horton then prepared formal application and necessary plans and complete studies, and distributed, distributed, rather, the required public notice. And the project moved through a series of three public hearings that were held in April, July, and August. D.R. Horton also offered a neighborhood meeting to gain some additional feedback from the residents of the area. This level of review demonstrates the time and the care and the energy spent by all involved, including many of the residents in this room, the professional experts, the staff, and the Plan Commission involved. In August, at the conclusion of the third hearing, the Plan Commission voted seven to two to recommend approval of Cantera Point. Staff also recommends approval based on an analysis of the findings of fact. The request on the agenda this evening is for the City Council to direct the city attorney to prepare ordinances. This request originally appeared before the City Council on September 2nd, but it was tabled, much like the rest of the process, to allow time to review the information and the materials and to be deliberate and thoughtful in the process. This is my overview of the process. I'm happy to answer any questions now or during your deliberation following the petitioner's presentation. Thank you.
Just curious, are there any Aldermen who have questions for Director Emery about the process? All right. Then we're going, go ahead. No, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask a question about the different studies that were done before the project was brought forward. There was a traffic study, and I believe there were, there might have been one or two other studies. And I just wondered, from your professional opinion, how dependable was the traffic study and any other studies that you can see? I think there was also one that evaluated the number of students that would be going into the schools. If you could address those studies, the quality and timing and so forth, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure, I'm happy to provide a little commentary on that. And I know the applicant can provide more detailed information as well if I don't answer all of your questions. For a project of this size, it's very typical to require a traffic study to understand with a new development, particularly with a change in use, what the traffic impact will be. In this case, they used a professional traffic firm that's done an analysis of other projects in our community and region. They're very reputable in what they do, and their work has been demonstrated to be factual, tested after developments have gone in to show that the numbers that they're generating are accurate. With the school studies that were done, we have in our code projections of how many students are anticipated based on different types of development. And those numbers were developed in partnership with the school district themselves. Those numbers, again, have proven to be consistent with the numbers of children that are coming from these types of development, and we review them regularly. They also had, I can't remember if it was between the first hearing or the second, but additional conversations directly with the school district to talk about these numbers. There was also some marketing study that was done of the site to talk about and to consider its commercial viability. They worked with CBRE as their real estate professionals over the last 10 years to evaluate the commercial market potential for the site. As a staff, we are, we work closely with Choose DuPage. They're our economic development agency here in the county. And we wanted to independently verify that result and information that they were providing, and they were able to concur with the information provided.
Just to follow up, the traffic study, I heard one thing that it was conducted during the pandemic, and then it may not be factual in its information that it provided. Did you see anything in the traffic study that would have changed it because of the time and place the traffic study was, was collected?
I did not, and our engineering team and planning professionals reviewed the study as well. I'm not, I'm not sure how to respond to that.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as the overall master plan that was developed for Cantera, how did staff react and what was their process in thinking about changing the master plan that was, you know, supposedly laid out for 50 years? And we're in, as we all know, we're in, we're in year 32. How do you look at that from the, the theory of it was supposed to be commercial and now we're looking at it as possible be residential?
I will share, it's, it's not an automatic. I mean, certainly that's the benefit and the beauty of the process is that we can take time to thoroughly consider a change in land use. It was a topic of conversation from the get-go when we had our pre-application meetings, through the Courtesy Review and every meeting thereafter. It's the reason why we spent extra time evaluating the commercial market viability of the site. Cantera is a beautiful plan, and it has definitely resulted in some wonderful development here in the community. It has guided the city in, in many ways, the decision-making processes. But to be clear and transparent, there have been variances granted for applications that are built there today. That is not an unusual thing to have variances granted, including variances for density. As we worked through the process, we also looked at the physical characteristics of the property and evaluated it in the context of today's marketplace. When Cantera was contemplated, it was a much different world when it comes to office and commercial development than we see today. We're also in a world that has a much different set of demands on it with respect to residential development. And so we, we did our best as a staff to evaluate all of those factors to consider the recommendation for the site.
Thank you. And, and the overall thought of the plan was to have the most impactful developments near the exits of I-88. And as the development spread out from that intense location at the center, it was designed to feather out and kind of reduce the intensity of use as, as it fell away from that centermost portion. Would you agree with, with that?
I, I would generally agree with that pattern. And with this particular land use at this location, it serves as a transition between the more intensive hotel uses and the outlying, lower-density, single-family residential neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If we've got any questions about just process before we get into having D.R. Horton, because we'll, we'll still have more, more time for questions amongst the Aldermen about the substance of it once we give the presentation from Horton. So if you don't mind, process question?
I hope so. I think so.
You think so? Give it a call.
Okay, I guess I can. Well, let's just wait.
We could wait.
I, I would just recommend that if we're going to do presentations, you have presentations, and then have a motion, and then deliberate. If there's questions specifically about what Ms. Emery said about the process, I think it's fine to ask questions. But if we're going to get into the actual substance, I think it's better to wait until we have a motion on the table.
All right. So let's turn it over to the petitioner for their presentations. Thank you very much. I defer to you.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Chuck. I'm with the law firm Rosanova &amp; Whitaker, and I'm here on behalf of D.R. Horton. With me this evening, I have Chris Funkhauser and Patrick Cook of D.R. Horton, along with our entire design team. And we're all available for any questions that you might have this evening. D.R. Horton is one of America's most recognized national builders. They were established in 1978, and they operate in 125 different markets across 36 different states. Currently, D.R. Horton is active in more than 30 communities in the Chicagoland area, including Schaumburg, Plainfield, Oswego, and St. Charles. First, I'd like to talk a little bit about the history of the property for context so that we can get to the why of the why this site and why we're here. The property is located within the Cantera PUD. Specifically, the site is located on the corner of Mill, Ferry, and Warrenville Road, as identified here. As I'm sure you're aware, the Cantera PUD was established in 1994 and comprises approximately 651 acres identified here in blue. So Cantera was approved and developed right around the tech boom of the 1990s. However, over the last two decades or so, the corridor, the tech corridor, I-88 tech corridor, has suffered from some pretty substantial office vacancy rates in excess of 20%. In the 2000s, the tech bubble resulted in the transformation of companies that had been the primary employers in the area. Since then, huge blocks of office space became available. Through the 2010s, the vacancy was driven by employers relocating to Chicago and seeking young, young talent. The office market in the 2020s has been defined by the lingering effects of COVID-19, now that working from home has become commonplace. And office vacancy rates actually reached 30% for the first time in the Chicago suburbs. In response to all of the office vacancies within and around Cantera have needed to get creative with land uses in order to help the long-term viability of the I-88 corridor. With that, we're seeing a recent trend of development, a mix of uses, including hotels, schools, dining, and even residential uses within the corridor in order to help provide that daily liveliness in order to improve blighted conditions and support the local businesses. Some of the residential communities within Cantera are highlighted here. All of them that are identified here are multifamily apartment buildings or townhome communities located around the perimeter of the Cantera PUD. Which brings me to the subject property. The subject property is a nine-acre parcel located along the perimeter of Cantera in conformance with those other residential uses within Cantera. Specifically, the property is identified as lots 3 through 7 under the Maycliff PUD and Plat of Subdivision. This was created in 2008, when the hotels were being developed on lots 1 and 2 identified here. So with that, the property is surrounded by many different land uses. We have single-family homes located to the north. The Garden School of Warrenville is to the east. Office uses are to the south. And we have hotels to the west, along with the Preserve at Cantera Apartments also to the west. The property also uniquely wraps around those existing hotel users from the west. Noteworthy fact is that the property actually suffers from some pretty extraordinary challenges. Not only is the geometry of the site unique, but the property will also require some pretty significant land development costs because much of the site is fill from the old quarry. So we, should this get approved, we would spend approximately a million dollars more than we would on a normal site in order to integrate geopiers and remedy what is upwards of 30 feet of fill in some areas. So bringing it back to the use, the subject property, as Ms. Emery mentioned, has been marketed for commercial use for at least the last 10 years, and they have been unsuccessful. We submitted a letter from CBRE, who's a global commercial real estate leader, indicating the marketing challenges of the site for the commercial development. In today's world, the commercial real estate market is struggling. E-commerce continues to thrive, and it leaves retail spaces blighted with high turnover and high vacancy rates. High daily traffic counts are needed in order to support commercial. In this location, Ferry, Mill, and Warrenville Road did not have the traffic counts to support commercial here. Commercial uses are more appropriate in, in existing commercial corridors such as Cantera Commons, along Deal Road, where the traffic counts can support additional commercial. That said, the tenant turnover at Cantera Commons is actually still ongoing. If Cantera Commons cannot sustain commercial, the subject property is not viable for commercial use. In addition, office development is not viable, provided that all, provided all of the office vacancies within the corridor. So for these reasons, we are proposing a 91-unit townhome community on the site, which provides a thoughtful land use transition from the higher-intensity hotel use to the single-family homes to the north. The plan on the left is the plan that we presented to the Plan Commission on April 24th. After some pretty substantial and productive conversation over three PCC meetings, we're now presenting you the plan on the right, which ended up receiving a positive recommendation from the Plan Commission. We reduced the number of units from 102 to 91. We increased the number of guest parking spaces to 36 spaces. I do think it's important to note that when we first presented the plan, we actually did exceed the parking requirement even at 102 units. Even though we reduced our unit count, we still increased the number of guest parking spaces based upon the feedback that we were receiving. Our parking is above and beyond the requirements of the Warrenville Code, Cantera PUD Regulations, and the ITE Parking Manual. We've increased separation of our buildings from our adjacent hotel neighbor. We've also increased open space landscaping and a number of amenities that will be offered. Understanding that we are requesting a dens- Understanding that we are requesting a density, a deviation for density, I want to remind everybody that density in itself is not a bad thing. We need more rooftops in order to support businesses and economic growth in town. The purpose of density, a density requirement, I should say, is to make sure that public facilities are not overwhelmed, and that we want to ensure that there's adequate separation between units and open spaces provided. We do not require any relief for any building setbacks or separation in the code. We also have a significant number of open space that will be provided, so this will ensure that in actual reality, the community will not be overly dense or impact light or air to adjacent units or property. Our open space technically equates to 74% of the site, per the Warrenville Code calculation. However, we took it a step, a step further, and we wanted to evaluate what's called common open space under the city's SD District Regulations. This actually yields 4.4 acres, or 47% of the site. This is still a very big number, and it's all actual usable open space. Please note, the, the code requirement is 15%. So, while yes, this project requires a deviation for density, it's quite unique that we're able to provide 47% common open space that's actually usable open space. Normally, when you see an overly dense project, it's difficult to illustrate just that 15%. Within that open space, we've also added additional landscaping, since this was first heard at the Plan Commission. There, we added 85 additional trees, nearly 500 shrubs, grasses, perennials, and ground cover in order to enhance the buffering within and around the community. The common open space will also include a significant number of amenities for the residents, including a seating area with shelter, a fire pit patio with seating, a totlot play area, a dog walk area, grass-girled patios with tables, benches and bottled lighting, and path and sidewalk connections. The sidewalk connections will provide residents with a seamless opportunity to gain access to the regional trail network and all the forest preserves that are located in close proximity to the site. I think it's largely overlooked in just how close the site is to these larger, beautiful regional open spaces. Though we've added a number of amenities that will be exclusive to the residents of the subdivision, we do expect that the residents will take advantage of these regional amenities as well. So, while there has been, there have been many questions as to why this site, we have continuously found reasons why this location is truly special for a unique residential community. Those reasons range from the transition from the high-density hotel to single-family neighborhoods, the, the site's proximity to the regional open spaces and trails, all while activating Cantera, which faces the ongoing vacancies. In addition to the physical site plan changes, I quickly wanted to touch base on student generation, since this was a common question that came up during the public hearing process. Pursuant to Warrenville's density calculations in the subdivision ordinance, we are expecting about 18 students generated from this community. The breakdown of the students.
Everybody?
The breakdown, the breakdown of the students for each school under this codified density calculation is shown here. So, we're expecting nine elementary students, or a 2% increase in student population, three middle-school students, or a 4%, 0.4% increase, and five high-school students, or a 0.2% increase. In addition, we evaluated District 200 enrollment data, and enrollment has decreased by about 1,300 students since 2018, so the district can handle the anticipated student generation of 18 students. We did meet with the stu, with the school district to, A, confirm that the numbers that were generated under the subdivision ordinance are consistent with what the school district is expecting, and B, to confirm there were no objections, and we did receive confirmation on both. This data all again dovetails back to density. I noted before that density in itself is not a bad thing. That said, the density restrictions are in place to ensure that public facilities are not overwhelmed. After meeting with the school district, we can confirm that the estimate is accurate, and the school district will not be overwhelmed. We also wanted to make sure that the public roads will not be overwhelmed by the development, so to this end, as we noted, we had a formal traffic study prepared. So, as shown here, the project is expected to generate about 644 daily trips. The peak morning hour is expected 42 trips, and the peak evening hour is expected 51 trips. During the peak morning and peak evening hours, when these three roads are most overwhelmed, the trips generated directly from Cantera Point will equate to between 0.6 and 0.9% of the daily trips on those roads. As such, the conclusion was that the roads can handle the anticipated traffic. Previously, a 125,000-square-foot office building was approved for the subject property. The daily trips estimated to be generated by that development were significantly higher at about 1,400 trips per day. Our proposal represents between 75 and 80% decrease in that number of trips during the morning and evening peak hours, and about 55% less traffic daily. Lastly, I quickly wanted to touch on elevations. The units will range from 1,600 square feet to 1,800 square feet, and will have two to three bedrooms, and as you see, they are three-story rear-loaded townhomes. Solar panels were raised during the PCC meetings, and to this end, we have agreed to commit to all buildings being solar-ready, so this means that we will install a chaise to the top of the roof to provide the homeowners with the option to incorporate solar should they desire. A lot of thought went into selecting the right home products for the site. We specifically selected this product in order to complement the Hyatt House architecture. It has a similar color scheme, it has a more urban design, and it has that flat roof architecture with the window paneling. This type of townhome with these features fits within the character of Cantera, while providing for that appropriate transition from the higher-intensity hotel use to the single-family neighborhood to the north, which is located nearly, approximately 200 feet from our nearest townhome building, across a four-lane major arterial road. Lastly, I'd like to share with you a couple of letters that we received from Lombard and Schaumburg regarding the type of townhome that we're proposing here, and just reflecting on what a great addition these communities have been to their town. So, with that, I want to thank the City Council for your time and consideration. We've certainly appreciated the residents' feedback throughout this process. We have appreciated working with staff. We do want to thank them for their ongoing support throughout this process and just, you know, guiding our way through. We have been at this, as Ms. Emery stated, for a while. We've made some pretty substantial changes, and we appreciate, again, everybody's feedback. So, this is a plan that we're proud of, and we feel it will be a great addition to Warrenville, and we're respectfully seeking your approval. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So, the process then works thusly. I would ask for a motion from an alderman to get this on the table for then discussion amongst the council. Alderman Davalos?
I would like to make a motion to accept Plan Commission recommendation and direct the city attorney to prepare draft ordinances granting necessary zoning approvals to authorize the Cantera Point townhome development on Maycliff Drive between Warrenville Road and Ferry Road.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
I heard Alderman Berry, so Alderman Berry, second. So, now we can have a conversation amongst the council. Could involve questions and answer with staff. Alderman Davalos, you start things off, since you made the motion.
Okay. One of the questions I had for Director Emery was, we heard a lot about density and zoning from, from the residents that were concerned. I just wondered if you could share your thoughts or knowledge on, we, we have several multifamily complexes and units now around Warrenville. How does the density of this particular development compare generally? Is it way over or under, or can you even know?
I mean, I can provide some context with some other developments around town. If I look beyond Cantera for a moment, Winchester has 15 dwelling, dwelling units per acre, Everton has 15 dwelling units per acre, Lexington has 10. The proposed Cantera is 9.64. Edgbrook and Thornwild have 9.5. If I look within Cantera at some of the projects, you do have some higher-density residential and some lower-density. The Cantera Village and Preserve are around 4.2 to 5 units per acre. With some of the higher-density developments, you have the Westland, which was approved with 45 units per acre, the Arden Apartments at 21 units per acre, Arden Townhomes at 17.24 units per acre, and the Riverview West Senior Development, 65 units per acre.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thanks.
Alderman Berry, you seconded, so. Any comments or questions?
I don't know if I really have any questions at this time. There was so much to read through and, which I did read the information from the Plan Commission, and I did spend two years on the Plan Commission, so, before I became an alderman. So, I understand what was written. I think that the developer has made some concessions as to what the, what's been provided, and I think those concessions have been, have been great. I do like the design of the project, because I think it relates to the area, because the area does have commercial. But my issue is residential and versus commercial, the amount of units there are, which we now have found out that the units are pretty normal compared to most of the other subdivisions that we do have concerning townhomes, condominiums. And I like the fact that.
Please. Please, a little respect. Thank you.
That's what we're asking for. That's what we're asking for.
Respect the process, please. Alderman Berry, my apologies.
We have to be hearing all these lies.
Alderman Berry?
One comparison, one comparison. They just told you.
Please, sir. Please, sir. Respect to your friends in the neighborhood here who are here to listen to what the council has to say, and please respect those who may be listening at home who can't hear what you have to say. So, please, just respect this process. This is how things work, and Alderman Berry has the floor. So, if you want to take it outside, please do so. Thank you.
Okay, I forgot where I was. I do like the, the fact that the, the units reflect the other buildings that are, are in the area. And like I was saying, the commercial versus the residential, when you really look at this, the amount of acreage and the amount of commercial that could possibly be built on that property is pretty great, and there would be so many more people in and out of that complex if there was a commercial unit there. A building that was three or four stories high with a lot of residents, I mean, employees working there, and traffic going from 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock in the morning till 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock at night. I think with the townhomes, you're going to get a less, less traffic, mostly in the morning, mostly in the evening, but there won't be that much commercial traffic during the day, or residential traffic during the day. Like I said before, and I, and you've heard this from me, and I've never lived in a single-family home, I like living in an area because it suits me where I have neighbors that are close by. I know that I can go 10 feet from my front door and knock on my neighbor's door, and they're going to be home. I know when my neighbors are home. They know when I'm home. They can look in my garage and see if my car is there or not. I'm, I'm very safe there, and so, I like this project, and I definitely will vote yes. Thank you.
Jump over to Alderman Ashar. What are your thoughts or questions?
The, I haven't supported this project from the beginning. I, I don't support, right from the start, the change in zoning. We've already given up a fairly large chunk of commercial zoning in Cantera and replaced it with high-rise apartments and townhouses. We certainly satisfied that need to a great extent. The, as, as far as the delivery, the presentation indicated to me that they were doing us a favor. Well, this is a big company, and their job is to fill a property up with as many houses as they can, make as much money as they can, and leave it. And we're the ones that are going to be left with what they do. And I would sooner see, sooner see businesses, or the opportunity for businesses, where we just got information at the last, or actually at our last meeting, that the hotels are back to, they've exceeded their pre-COVID levels. We've had certainly somebody bring up the possibility of another hotel there, just because there's a casino going in just down the tollway that will generate stays. The, I look at this property as something that should benefit the residents, not make it harder for them. And I don't see that level of residential and that density, which is, it's going to be one of the densest townhouse developments that we have, no matter how you stretch it. And you can, you can say all you want about the wonderful open space that's between the front door and the road, but I don't know who's going to play badminton, or volleyball, or baseball in 30 feet before the trees. But the, I think it's too little extra parking. There's basically four, four parking places per unit, plus about 20, 20-some-odd extra parking places. I don't, they, they, there's not much about it that I can even point to and say, this is a great thing. It's, it may be a great thing for the developer. I don't view it as a great thing for Warrenville. So, I will be of a noble.
Alderman, I guess, could, we'll get through, we'll get through. Please respect the process. Alderman Agustinovich, have you, your comments, questions, thoughts?
Just a little bit about the visitor parking. How many of those are going to be set aside for handicap spots? I was walking around Everton the other day, and they had spots they couldn't park in, and there was only limited to a few spots for visitors. How many are there going to actually be set up for that?
I don't, I don't have that number in front of me at the moment. Maybe we can look at the plans and pull it. Sorry.
Do you, as the applicant, happen to know that offhand or not? If not, we'll get back to it. Other questions, comments, thoughts?
That was actually one of my big questions on the whole parking situation.
Thoughts in general?
Is this where I can actually do the, make the motion?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm.
It's up to you. I can't give.
Okay, no, I just want to make sure it's in the proper.
Welcome to now, if you want to make.
I'd just like to move to amend the motion to send the recommendation back to the Planning Commission with the direction to conform to the requirements for six units per acre with no more than the 56 units on this project.
So, there's a motion. See if you can hear that. The motion requires a second before anything.
Also, can you just please say that again more slowly, so I can write it down to make sure I have your full motion?
Move to amend the motion to send the recommendation back to the Planning Commission with the direction to conform to the requirements of six units per acre with no more than 56 units for this project.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Ashar. Discussion on this motion, on the motion to send it back to the Plan Commission with this stipulation.
So, the, the deliberation would be on the motion to amend the main motion? So, that would be what would be deliberated now?
So, conversation on this motion. Alderman Agustinovich?
Just listening to the people, what they've brought to me, and hearing some of the concerns along with the numbers I was seeing, I just want to follow the actual plans that we've put forth in Cantera. I mean, right now, we're in, what, year 32 of it? What's going to happen in 18 years? Is everything going to change? So, I think we should stick to, well, first off, the commercial plan, but for this, we should at least stay within the numbers that they earlier proposed.
Alderman Ashar, since you're second. Any comments or?
I just support the motion. I don't want to see it going forward at the density and the product that's been presented. I mean, I'd obviously prefer to see it be a motion to, to take it to the Planning Commission to make sure that they keep it commercial, but I'll take whatever I can get.
Alderman Davalos, you had your hand. This is again, a question to remand it back to.
This is just on the Alderman Agustinovich addition. Okay. I, I personally am, am not in favor of it for two reasons. One is I'm, I'm not as concerned about the density as I look at the other properties that the Community Development Director talked about for this piece of property. Number two, we, it is very unlikely that we're going to be doing in 2025 and '26 exactly what the original Cantera covenants were, because, because we've talked about this tonight already. Things have changed so much, just, just the amount of, of people now that work from home, that's one thing, technology, all kinds of things. We have empty office buildings that we can't fill. We have, we have property that's for commercial that no one's coming for. We have we have property that's for commercial that no one's coming for. The most popular thing that's being built, one of the most popular things that's being built, not just here or the Chicago area, but around the country, is this kind of housing. It is this is the kind of housing, especially young people, are buying. They often have kids, and then they buy a single family, and that's pretty normal. But right now, with the economy as it is and things going on, this is what these are the offers that come and the ideas that come to be built. No matter what we might want, you one thing I've learned in this job is you have to let the market guide you. You have to be reasonable, and you have to be really good about it, which our planning commission and our staff is really solid and good about things. And that's why it took so many public hearings and so many things to get this right. But it is I think it is unreasonable to expect that we are going to try to keep zoning and covenants that were what they were in the 90s. And so that's why I'm not in favor of going back.
Other questions from the council on this motion to send back to the planning commission? Any questions or comments? Alderman Crockenberg?
I'm not in I'm in favor of sending it back to planning commission. I'd like to see the number of units reduced. I can appreciate the citizens' comments. I can appreciate the work that D H D R Horton has done to already reduce the number. I'd like to see it reduced even more. I'd like to look at the profile of the buildings, looking at the grading plan, you know, the the buildings. I guess I'd like to look at the buffer, the landscape buffer between Warrenville Road and the existing single-family residences, as how does that relate to the, you know, to the three-story profile of this building? You know, can the building be lowered? Can the finished floor of the building be lowered so that the profile is not as as tall? Can some of that green space that's in the interior of the plan by the hotel, who could care less about the green space and the buffer space? Could some of that be moved to the outside along Ferry Road and along Warrenville Road to increase the buffer there? Would that help? So those are the things that I I guess I would look for.
Again, questions on this motion to send back to the planning commission? If not, you have a motion and a second. And the motion, again, if you'd read it for us, please, if you recall the text.
Alderman Agustinovich, correct me if I'm wrong, but so the motion is to amend the main motion, essentially to substitute it so that the motion is moved to amend or the motion is to move to amend the main motion to remand the proposal back to the planning commission with the direction that the development can form to the six-unit-per-acre density requirement and with no more than 56 units.
Good. So we have a motion and a second. Does this recall, roll call? Yeah, roll call, please. Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Alderman Widener?
Nay.
Alderman Wilkie?
Nay.
Alderman Berry?
Nay.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Crockenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Ashour?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Nay.
Alderman Davalos?
Nay.
So the motion fails. So we are back with our current motion, which was made and seconded already. So let's have a conversation amongst council about what we have before us, which is a recommendation from the planning commission in a year-long process. We heard it all. So Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, thank you. So looking at this and looking at everything that's going on and looking at the history of things that we've already been through, if we look at this property and we look at what's going on and with the way that it is zoned now for commercial, residential, retail, whatever you want to be, whatever you want to say, there was that report from CBRE, which, you know, they stated, hey, it's just not feasible right now to be looking at office, retail, commercial. And then the staff went to choose DuPage, a completely third-party, really no interest in this project whatsoever. They're just there for guidance. Well, they came in and they said the same thing. They said, hey, office, retail, commercial, it's not going to work. So then there were some comments, there were some things about, right, we need Aldi, we need Trader Joe's, we need all these different things, okay? Well, it's very easy to go, if you go online and you look at the minimum requirements that it's going to take to drive these businesses here in order to develop this site, right? If you look at Aldi, they require 21,000 cars to go past that site. We do not have anything close to that. We are 6,000, you know, on a good day. But if you look at all the retail, you look at all the developers, they all have the same kind of formula that they use, right? When they're looking at all potential properties on what they're going to use or what they're going to develop that to be, right? So just looking at traffic count, it's and and high density because they want high density within three to five miles of that location, which we don't have currently. And I'm not saying that this project makes it high density because you're only adding potentially 200 people, right? We're not adding thousands of people or whatnot to this. So the fact that we are holding on to this and have been and marketed it for over 20-something years for something that is never going to come because the numbers just don't work for those who we are trying to get to invest in the community, it's just not going to happen. So this property, just being real, right, is going to be residential of some sort, okay? And I understand the density side of all of this, okay? The one thing is, is that we've been through this. We've had residents sit here, we've gone through it with Lexington, we went through it with Everton, okay? Both of those happen to be in my ward. Well, when you meet these people, you talk to these people, they're very happy for the opportunity, okay? And they love Warrenville just as much as all of us, okay? They shop in our shops, they help our small business, they do all this stuff that we all do every single day, okay? So to me, that shows that what we've done with Lexington, what we've done with Everton has been successful. We have brought other people here to this community to experience it, to love it, to like it, to shop in it, and to support it, right? So for something like this, again, adding 91 units, potentially 200 people, I just don't think that that's a lot to ask, especially when we're not going to get the business that we always thought we were going to get. I would rather get 200 people that are going to support our small business here locally than nothing at all or wait another 20 to 25 years for something that the numbers just don't work. It's just never going to happen. So because of that, I am in favor of moving this forward. Thank you.
Alderman Wilkie, can I call on you?
Just a couple comments. Sorry for my voice. Hopefully, it'll hold up. I worked for school district 200 for 35 years. I was active in the union there, and the teachers' union is very cognizant of the numbers and the formulas that the school district uses to estimate number of students. So I am very confident, and it has shown over the years, that the numbers that they come up with, the number of students, are not going to overcrowd our schools. The police department, the fire department, city services all agree that this project is not going to tax our services anymore. We'll be able to handle it. The other comment I would like to make is, yes, a lot of you were here tonight. I received numerous emails, numerous phone calls for and against this project. So those of you that are against the project have been very vocal. However, the people that are for this project have also sent emails and talked to us, I'm sure every single Alderman here. I want you to remember that your words, the choice of your words, and the tone of those words matter. And when I get emails that suggest or insinuate that there's impropriety by city staff, the plan commission, and us as a city council, just because we disagree with your views doesn't mean you haven't been heard, that your words haven't been heard. You ask for respect, but you can't get respect unless you give it. And I've also heard the comment that city workers come to work every day just to screw the citizens of Warrenville. And that is inappropriate, that is wrong, and I don't agree with it. Our staff, our city council, our mayor and plan commission are all here to try to do the best for Warrenville. And I think people forget that because we don't agree with your situation or your view on the matter. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Yes, I did have one, I think, unanswered question. Somebody brought up the fact about stormwater, and I was just wondering how the man water's going to be managed on this site, if you could go into that, just to clarify, please.
Sure. As a part of our process, our engineering team reviews the stormwater requirements for any new development, and for this project, the stormwater is accounted for within Cantera off-site. So there was a a plan in place. The volume, based on the amount of impervious surface there, has been accounted for, it'll be provided for within the ponds that are adjacent to this property.
Okay, thank you. So it is handled, and we're not in danger of, you know, flooding any of the neighboring properties?
That's correct. The standard is to make sure that the stormwater management is handled within the development, not to overflow to outlying areas.
And I've been impressed with the look of the Cantera Preserve development that's going to be stationed right next door. It seems like the landscaping there has really made that development disappear in a lot of ways when you're walking in the neighborhood and everything. And I just wonder whether with the boosted landscaping plan that has been offered by the developer, do you have any idea on like what how long it'll take to reach opacity so that like if you're looking across the street at it, the buildings aren't going to be quite quite so apparent?
I'm not a landscape architect by trade. That's a very tricky question. I mean, I can confirm that we reviewed the plan versus our standard. It exceeds our standard. The planning commission spent a lot of time talking about the importance of native plantings on the site and shielding views and providing buffers. So it is extensively landscaped. It has more landscaping than what we saw, even of some of their comparable products in the other communities that were referenced. But I can't confidently give you a clear timeframe for complete shielding.
And would there be an effort possible to work with DuPage Department of Transportation? I mean, we saw that a commercial venture would dump way more traffic out onto Ferry Road, Mill Street, and Warrenville Road. And I just wonder if this project moves forward, would there would be an opportunity for the city and the developer to work with Department, DuPage Department of Transportation to create traffic calming efforts and try to reduce the impact of, I think it was 90 cars during peak load in the morning and in the afternoon, which would be way, way less than a commercial enterprise being built there. And I'm just wondering, you know, for all the residents in Warrenville, whether there'd be a way to reduce the impact of traffic.
The city staff does have a close relationship with the staff in DuPage County. As we're looking at making roadway improvements and new projects that come in, we collaborate rather closely. And this exact topic also came up during the plan commission, and D R Horton committed to working with DuPage County to see if there were additional improvements that could be made within their right-of-ways. We can't commit to making improvements in their right-of-ways. They have authority over those areas, but they absolutely committed to working with staff to reach out. Improvements can be made beyond what is shown today.
Okay. Because I I think the opportunity for crosswalks and making the area continue to be more pedestrian and bicycling friendly is is an important move.
Just to add one more point, I know that there was some observation about the condition of the pathways in that area. We do have an intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County, and those pathways will be improved and resurfaced by the end of 2026. So that's on the radar, and should coincide, should this development be improved, with the occupancies happening.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I had a question, and I got distracted last time. The I don't remember the numbers, but if you could help me, Amy, do you know the percentage of commercial space that we have in Cantera and the percentage of unoccupied space or the I should say the percentage of occupied and unoccupied, whatever, however we term it? Can you do you have any of that information? Because my I'm looking for businesses, you know, not really restaurants or, you know, Targets or places like that or the movie theater. I'm looking for real business buildings.
I can provide some context for that. I don't have a specific number, a square footage to find for you, but historically, Cantera has had a healthy vacancy of around 20 to 25 percent, and that would be historically meaning pre-COVID and the years before that, even when office development was booming. That information was relayed to me by the prior director, who was here for 30 years and observed the occupancies and permits that were approved within that development. Certainly, we know with the office environment today, vacancies have continued. It's a difficult number to track, though, because what happens is there are buildings that have vacancies, but some of that square footage is under lease. And so while people may actually be not not be physically in that building, it doesn't look like it's vacant because there's a lease that's in place for another five or 10 years. So I do agree, I mean, we're seeing information from CBRE and other real estate companies throughout the region that it would not surprise me that the vacancy is at 30 percent or in excess of that. I certainly get the calls from building owners and developers that are challenged to find tenants. We have been fortunate as a community to have great new medical projects, like the expansion at Northwestern, occupancy of some of our other buildings by Endeavor Health, the new Orion STEM School as a reuse of an office building to an educational use. But there are many challenges out there to fill the spaces.
Because I do know that you're right about the leases. There can be office space there, but no one is occupying it. But because there was a lease, that business has to pay it out. And so it really is considered unoccupied at the moment, even though someone is paying for it. So that was my question. Thank you.
This is for Amy. Is there an opportunity, then, if this goes forward, to look at the site plan again, or is this the final site plan that we're looking at this evening?
I saw Brooke leaning in and take her glasses off. Did you want to respond to that?
The the plans that have been recommended by the, you know, the recommendation on the table are the plans that are in the packet. Those are the plans that would be referenced in the ordinance that would be prepared if the motion passes. That's on the table right now. So I guess the short answer to your question is no. That absent further continuation of this process and and willingness on behalf of the applicant to amend their plans, if the motion goes forward tonight, the plans that are in front of you will be attached to the ordinance, and it will actually require compliance with those plans, unless there's further amendment or other conditions imposed, I guess.
Thank you.
However, may I ask this question? If the petitioner decided to add twice as much landscaping, they could probably do that? Or if there were some additions, they wanted to address some of the concerns that have been raised that aren't in the plans approved tonight, they could- they could probably, would they have to come back? Or is something that goes above and beyond something they can do within the planning department and the code enforcement and stuff like that?
I think the answer to that question is it depends on what it is. You know, of course, adding additional landscaping likely is, you know, not something you would need approval for. If it's significantly changing the site plan where you're relocating structures, or changing setbacks, or, you know, something that would otherwise require relief, then, yes, they would need further relief. They could always come back for additional relief in the future. Or if it's something like that, you could move to add a condition to this approval, to add something like that. But if it's something that requires a change in the, like, architectural or engineering plans, they would likely need to come back.
Understood, thank you. So the plan before us is the plan before us. Other questions or comments? Alderman Augustinovich?
One of the interesting comments that, during citizens' comments, came up was spot zoning. How many times are we going to, as a council, just pick one little spot and change it? Every time we do something, it seems like we're just changing just one little spot for something. It's going to look like a checkerboard soon if we keep doing this. We have a master plan. We should be following that. If not, bring it to the whole thing to the council, and let's redo it. Let's find something for the next, what, 50 years? Also, here's another question for Amy. Do you know how much average per student is spent for District 200?
These are really great questions, but I don't have that figure in front of me.
$18,510 per student at, was that, you said, how many students was that, just under 20? So that's about $333,000, give or take, per school district now. So that's going to be $3,661 per unit in property taxes, just for the students. So how much more are we going to have when we start having more students coming into, not just there, but once the schools start getting rolled up?
I'm not sure I understand the second part of your question.
Let me rephrase that. When they start getting enrollment up with all of our other housing, when, let's just say, the boomers move out, and we get more families in with kids into our residential, and they start having more kids, are we going to see any projection of higher occupancy or higher school rates at that point? Because we're going to start getting a lot more students once the next generation moves in and starts having kids.
So the city staff works closely with the school district. As I alluded to before, the projections that we have in our code are actually provided by the school district based on analysis that they do. It is incumbent on the school district that they monitor those numbers. I know that they do that very closely as they report those student numbers to us in other areas of the community, in the TIF areas and whatnot. If they begin to see an increase or a change in those numbers, I would suspect, as has been my experience in other districts, that they would seek to reevaluate those numbers and look at changes at that time. When that were to happen, if that were to happen, that is a decision for the school district, and we would act accordingly.
Thank you.
Okay, we've gone around the table. Other conversations or questions or anything that's been missed? Stuart, Alderman Ashauer?
Thank you. We've got, I know there's at least three people on the council that are concerned about the density. My question is, is there some way the council could send this back for a reduction in density that would be agreeable to everyone? It is crammed full. I mean, you look at the site plan, it's very impressive. I don't know how I could have gotten more units in there myself. Is there any feeling from the council about that, just as a question?
Well, we did have the motion that failed to do that. So I don't see, given our current motion, and current second, and current conversation, where that could happen. Alderman Crokenberg?
But that was for a specific number. That was to go down to a certain number, 56. What if the number's not 56? What if the number's something in between? Or to address some of the landscape issues that we've talked about, the buffer, or whatever?
Right, I mean, I just want to clarify that, even if, and I'm not passing judgment on whether or not you should make the motion, but just to clarify the procedure, if such a motion were to pass, if it were to go back to the plan commission with that direction, there's no way to require the applicant to do something. They're either willing to do it or not, and are able to do it for, you know, all the reasons that they consider making their plan. So if they're not able to do it, it may come back to you in a similar form. So I guess I just want to clarify that it's not necessarily something that you can say, like, we're not going to allow you to have more this number of units. Do you know what I mean? So the plan commission could, even if the plan commission makes a negative recommendation, it would still come back to the council, and you would still need to vote on it. So I just want to clarify that it won't necessarily be able to, like, cap it at the plan commission necessarily. It would be more direction for, you know, that would be the plan commission's direction, and the applicant would have to make a decision about what to do about that direction. But it's not necessarily like a firm rule that would be imposed.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the table. Alderman Davalos, last comment before we, because you made the motion correct.
A comment for the attorney for Horton. I've gone past that site a bunch of times now. And there are some gorgeous trees that circle along Warrenville Road on Mill, come around. Are those going to be left, or are those come down? Or do you even know yet? They better stay.
Can you come up, please, and use the microphone? Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, Chris Funkhauser, Land Acquisition Project Manager for D.R. Horton. To address the existing landscape that is out there, we are reasonably trying to preserve as much as we can. Unfortunately, there are a significant number that do come out, if you, of trees that do come out. If you know the area, you know that there's a double row of trees in many areas. The inside row is generally coming out. The outside row, we are preserving as much as we can and replacing and supplementing with a significant amount. We actually had added 85 shade trees from what we had at Plan Commission. From our second meeting, we increased that at the directive. So we are trying to increase that in relationship to those that are being removed.
Thank you. I think keeping that outer ring, I think those are going to grow big and be a buffer. So that's wonderful, that at least the outer ring is going to, you're going to try to save.
And two, that, one more point. Those are well-established trees. Some of those, the honey locusts, are reaching their maturity, you know, 25, 30 years. Some of those are health-wise, better off being replaced. So just to note that, but yes, we are replacing some of them.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, second. We've had our discussion, we've had conversation, we've had public input. We've had a over-years-long process for this to go. If you don't mind, point of privilege, I'd like to add my comments, although the vote is the council's vote. But I go back to 1992. Tim Cosgrove was on the Plan Commission with me at that time when this all came to light. So I think there's only a few of us in the room that were around at that time. And I guarantee you, at that time, they said, we were creating this plan, this planned unit development, this concept, knowing that there would be changes. I guarantee that was part of the conversation. I also remember the conversation being it would be high-density in the middle, I think it was discussed earlier, and it would go towards the edges. With the only residential at the time, the conversation was that it would all be in District 200. We now have a little bit actually down in District 203, but it was all going to be in District 200. And it would be around Warrenville Road and around the river. So that was a part of the conversation way back when. Couple weeks ago, I've had a couple of conversations with some of the residents who spoke tonight, and I shared this with them. This is the zoning map of the city. So lots of different colors represent different things. But what I wanted to emphasize here was, these here are over, all over here are various different variances and changes up to the code over the years to accommodate what we currently have as our community character in Warrenville. I wouldn't call it spot zoning. I would say it's been variances, and very thoughtful variances by the Plan Commission. Having been on the Plan Commission, I take that personally, and I know the residents who participate in that, too, take it very personally as well. But everything can be brought to the Plan Commission, can be brought to us for variances, for consideration, for changes. And that's what we've seen in this process. And remember, too, that the city code does not say six units per acre. It's the code, or the overlying discussion and the planned unit development for Cantera had that as part of it. So it's not violation, or not necessarily superseding or throwing out city code. So these things change. I mean, much like our state constitution, our national constitution, they all have the opportunity for alteration over the years based on considerations. That was 40, 30-some years ago. Yes, we do have 18 more years left of that concept that was brought to us, that we haggled with, with LaSalle Partners and the people that were involved in planning this. Knowing full well, that's probably 80% or 90%, or 70% what you're going to see, but in 50 years, it probably wasn't going to be just like that plan at that time. And that's, I think, what we've got today. Went through all this information, had some great meetings with residents who are very passionate about their neighborhoods and what they see, as well as, and you heard some conversations tonight, residents who didn't sign a petition. Some who are in the East Side neighborhood who support this development, who are small business owners, and/or just residents who think it would be a good idea to have someplace like this to live in, in Warrenville, if you wanted to. Maybe they've been to the Lombard location or the Schaumburg ones. I have. I took a Sunday field trip a few weeks ago and drove through the Lombard location and accosted a few residents who were walking their dogs and in their garage, and asked them what they thought of things. They had nothing but good things to say about you and the developments. Those developments, if I'm not mistaken, numbers that I've gotten from the planning department, are much more dense developments than what we will, would be seeing on this plan here. And in fact, even Emerald Green is much more dense than we'd be seeing in this plan here. So took it upon myself to do that. Very nice places, and folks out there had nothing but nice things to say about it. And the landscaping was fantastic. So if you're going above and beyond for us here in Warrenville, that certainly will be appreciated. But again, the, you know, the petition was heard. We have it. We have the comments that went ahead of the petition. And if you go through objectively the comments that were posed to those who signed the petition, they are, in many ways, opinion, and not supported by objective facts from either the fire department, the school district, the city staff, the traffic analysis. So it comes down to a lot. And when I first saw this, by the way, in the last December, when I first saw the 100-unit development, I had the same feeling, that's a lot. And that's too much, and we should go back and push. And the Plan Commission did. But when it comes down to this, then, what I come down to is it's just change, and I don't like it, and I don't want it. And I have fear that these things will come true. But by the objective data that I've seen, that staff has provided, that, yes, the developer has provided, too, I'm not afraid of that. I think it'll be a beautiful development. I think it, if the council approves it, and I think we'll have 200 or so great neighbors to come to town, to shop in our shops, to maybe start a shop, or start a business in town, and to add to the community, and to become part of that character that we're all concerned about here. Because we all are neighbors. We may disagree at the end of the night, but we are all neighbors here. And I hope we can take that home and remember that. Because there are 15,195 residents. There are 300 or 400 represented on the petition. There are eight representing here that represent all 15,000 and have to make that decision. So with that, clerk, will you call the roll, please, on the question?
Alderman Crokenberg?
Nay.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Nay.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Nay.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
And Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. The next item on our, oh, the next, and then just, if I could, really quick, the next part of the process, if I can put you on the spot a second, Amy, with where this would go from here with the developer is what?
The city attorney's been directed to prepare ordinances that will come back to the October 20th city council meeting, I believe, is our intent. That would appear on the agenda for final approval.
Good, thank you. So next on our agenda, we do have two, an item is accept the staff recommendation. I do have glasses here. And by the way, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. We do appreciate your comments. Accept staff recommendation and pass Resolution R2025-XX, approving a change order to the agreement with BSNA Software for the license and implementation of municipal enterprise resource planning software. Anyone care to make that motion? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation and pass Resolution R2025-56, approving a change order to the agreement with BSNA Software LLC for the license and implement, implementation of municipal enterprise resource planning software.
Second.
So we've moved in second. Any discussion, questions? Would you like to explain it, Phil?
Sure. During the implementation of the BSNA software, staff went through about five smaller change orders that altered the, a little bit of the scope here and there as we learned more about how we'd use the software. That amounted to about a production of just under $900 to the contract. This change order is far larger. It's a production of $33,000 to the contract, and it's eliminating one of the integrations between the BSNA software and our citizen engagement software. After talking with community development staff, specifically code enforcement, who would have been using that integration, I was determined that it wasn't desirable based on the way the citizens interact with code enforcement and how staff would be using it. So BSNA created the change order, reduced the contract. And that's a change order in the agenda backup materials. As a reminder, the overall contract with BSNA was just over $446,000. And the net reduction so far, or at this point, is $33,855 total with all those change orders.
Thank you. Call the roll, please. Was there a question? I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Thank you, call the roll, please.
Okay. Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
And Alderman Crokenberg?
Aye.
The motion carries. And the last item, first of all, preface this unless you want to. No, you haven't spoken at all tonight, so. I think I'll put you on the, I'm going to put you on the spot.
So the last item is a consideration for a work group to work with staff to look at consolidating committee of the whole at consolidating Committee of the Whole and City Council meetings. I would anticipate a few months of deliberation, maybe a total of three to four meetings to talk about whether or not it makes sense to consolidate council and committee meetings to the same evening, open up potential Monday evenings, that we wouldn't be encumbered with a scheduled public meeting for things like budget workshop or budget deliberations or strategic planning or other things, and just working through the logistics of that, including potential changes to start time, how the agenda might be structured. So again, just working with staff through that process.
Motion of any kind, are there any aldermen who would like to volunteer to serve on this little working group with staff? Two. Don't make me point to anybody. Alderman Davalos and Alderman Berry. Okay. We have our two who would fill in the blanks if, oh, I thought you had a comment. No, you raised your hand.
I'm, no, I'm good, but I just want to make sure that staff understands that I can't get a meeting until like 5:15, 5:30 in the evening, so.
They'll be good to you, I'm sure.
We'll make it work.
Okay.
So if somebody would like to make a motion and include Alderman Davalos and Alderman Berry in that, Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Mayor Johnson's recommendation and establish a work group to evaluate consolidating the City Council and Committee of the Whole public meeting schedule and assign Alderman Berry and Alderman Davalos as aldermanic liaisons to the work group and direct staff to provide Warrenville and Bloom with a QR code to include on the 2026 calendar in lieu of published meeting dates.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Do we ever have unfinished business? Has it been?
Not in the time I've been.
Not in the time? Maybe that could be taken from there, too. New business? Any new business? No need for a closed session? So I just want to compliment everyone on the meeting time, I know many people have left, but thanks for your consideration and comments and thoughts and responses to the public, and I'm sure we'll continue on. So kudos to all, and same with the Plan Commission, so. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So we move in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.